Aloha, good morning and welcome to the judiciary. This Judiciary Committee public hearing in advance of the special session. I'm Senator Jared Kehoe Kalole, Vice Chair of the Committee, and will be presiding over this morning's hearing. This hearing and YouTube livestream event is for the Judiciary Committee's 11:00 AM agenda on three appointments to judgeships in the First Circuit, which is comprised of the island of Oahu. The other members of the Judiciary Committee are Senators Laura Acasio, Mike Gabbard, Chris Lee, Donna Mercado Kim, Kurt Favella, and Chair Carl Rhodes, who is unable to join us today. Excuse me. This hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for all Senate hearings and meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. If you are interested in seeing the written testimony, you can go to the Legislature's website at capital.hawaii.gov. In the unlikely event that we need to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business this afternoon, October 17th, at 3:00 PM in Room 229 and on video conference. And a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. For those of you testifying remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until it is your turn to testify. And per the Committee's practice, there is a two-minute time limit per testifier. If there are temporary glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the Committee has already received your written testimony. I'll be reading from a list of people who have submitted written testimony for each appointee, and we apologize if the closed captioning doesn't accurately transcribe your names. Again, if you are interested in seeing the written testimony, you can go to the Legislature's website at capital.hawaii.gov. And a reminder to those of you present and testifying online that we will defer decision-making on the Committee's recommendations, as is our practice in this Committee, to Wednesday, October 19th, at 10:30 AM in Room 229 and via video conference. So what we'll do this morning is move to our testifier list, followed by testimony from the Hawaii State Bar Association, and then we'll have the nominees come forward and then take questions. So we'll begin with we will begin with the first nominee. Governor's message one, for consideration to the Circuit Court of the First Circuit, James S. Kawashima. We have 10 individuals in support, one in opposition, and the Bar Association with comments. Before I read the names for the record, are there any individuals present who we missed or who would like to submit testimony in person? Okay, so I'd like to note Gerard Silva in opposition and the following individuals in support Jeffrey Cumea, James N. Melvia Kawashima, Voltaire Goncet, Clark Hirotta, Lon Paresa, Taran Tomasa, Okichuku Amari, Aubrey Bento, Sheena Krail, and Crystal Glendon. We also have the Bar Association offering comments. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Kehoe Kalole and members of the Judiciary Committee. Thank you for your time. On behalf of the Hawaii State Bar Association, the bar and the Board of Directors finds Judge James Kawashima qualified and recommends him for the position. Thank you. Any question?
Any questions for the Bar Association? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we'll have the nominee. Please come forward and make a statement if you'd like to.
Good morning, Vice Chair Kehoe Kalole, Senator Gabbard, Senator Kim, Senator Lee. Thank you all for your time and consideration. I'd like to start out by saying it's a great honor for me to even be here today before you for this particular nomination. But that being said, it did encourage me to think about my past and what brought me to this point. My father grew up in Wainoa. I literally grew up in a Quonset hut where he had to catch a 3:00 AM bus every morning to get to school. But it impressed upon him and he upon us the importance of education and the value of effort you put into something is what you get out of it. Wainoa was also a lot smaller back then, so the sense of community was particularly strong. And I think that's what drove him to public service. He served in Vietnam and dedicated his entire career besides law to the purpose of education and still supports it now. And of course, that's what led me and my sister into the practice of law as well. But it's only recently I started to realize that both sides of my family, the Minoas side, my mother's side, also has a strong sense of community about it. It just never occurred to me till recently, and it's funny because it should have. We started out, it's Sunday School lessons up at the Korean Christian Church in Leleha, but also through the work that my mother's done through various offices, including the auditors and the city council right now. But most importantly, every time I look out my window here at District Court, I'm reminded of my aunt, Melissa and Kim. The Hawaii State Art Museum was her, I believe, crowning achievement before she retired and passed away a few years ago. But she dedicated her entire work to various positions here in this building for this very legislature. And that's why I think that it's been impressed upon me the importance of paying back for all the advantages that we've got in our lives, the public service aspect of it, which continually has brought me back, not only as a prosecutor, but as a federally appointed, court-appointed public defender on a pro-rata basis, admittedly, the pro bono work I've done for the Sex Abuse Treatment Center, and of course, my time as a per diem and District Court Judge. And that's why I'm here today. Hopefully to take that same experience and sense of community and public service forward to the circuit level where the cases' scale and timeframe make it possible to deal with cases on a more individualized, intensive level with the parties, I see the litigants, whether they're criminal or civil, and sometimes even cooperatively reach conclusions and issue judgments that are satisfactory, not just to the litigants, but to the community at large. And that's why I'm here today, I think driven by that sense of community, something that my family's impressed upon me in the past and that I hope to continue, not only in the present, but into the future. And that being said, I thank you again for your time. I welcome any questions, comments, or concerns that any of you may have. I'm at your disposal.
Thank you very much, members. Questions?
Morning, Mr. Kawashima.
Morning.
I see that you have applied several times for different positions in the court. And so currently you are on District Court, which you did apply for that numerous times, but you applied for the Circuit Court as well. So is your passion more for the Circuit Court? And then you it seems that you were appointed to the District Court in 2016. And in 2017, you applied for the Circuit Court.
Right. By that point, I'd already been doing Circuit Court jury trials for the domestic violence misdemeanor jury calendar. So I'd had a sense of not only what was involved at the circuit level, but whether I was ready, at least in my view, and I realize a lot of other people have input on that, but at least in my view, to apply, and that's what that 2017 application represents.
Okay. It's just that, you know, the District Court, there's a lot of turnover. And we would like to see some consistency. And I appreciate the fact that you did, in fact, have served six years now. But the fact that as soon as you were appointed and after one year, you were already applying for the next position. I really would like to see more consistency. So are we going to be able to see that you're going to serve most of your time at the Circuit Court? Are you going to jump, apply for something else?
Well, I understand your concerns, Senator. They're valid. I don't want to seem like I'm being mercurial or treating any of this trivially, but I
And I asked every, every, every confirmed same question, so.
But I would point out that I was basically dedicated as a per diem judge. I've scaled my law practice down to where I was only handling two or three cases at a time for the five years preceding 2016. I had, by that point, already on my own created, or I should say, built upon the training materials that Judge Hayashi left behind for us. So without even being a full-time judge, I was already in a training capacity for the other per diems. So it's not so much a question of jumping around on a whim so much as seeing whether or not I could actually do the job. By 2017, whether it's true or not, I was at least confident that I could do the job of a District Court judge. And I believe the reviews that I got from the HSBA in general reflect that to an extent. The level of reviews that have been given in were always positive, and they've gotten more positive over the years. And I believe it's because my experience has led me to a point where I can work more cooperatively, or at least, you know, avoid the black robe syndrome that I believe you asked me about seven years ago as a concern. And that is something I keep in mind. So it's not a question of ambition or, again, being whimsical or mercurial as to whether or not I can commit to a full term, Senator. I would like to tell you that I've just done a full term as a district judge, but as you can see, I've applied to circuit during that time. And in all honesty, and I may have mentioned this the last time I was here, I have an unusually broad experience, not just as a judge, but as a litigator. And the reason for that was thought planted in my mind by my uncle Edward Nakamura. He was the one that thought I should get out of criminal, get into civil, get a broad range of experience. He never lived to see me actually make the bench, but as you know, excuse me, I haven't thought about him in a while. But as you may know, he was a very well-respected member of the Supreme Court. He was called the Court Scholar. You know, he fought for the country in World War II as part of the 442nd. So that's a legacy that I could never hope to live up to, but it's guidance that I have to give honor to. So I gather a broad range of experience, the kind of application that it implies, or even almost demands, suggests a wider range of just settling for where I am at any given time. The long answer to a short question, I'm sorry, Senator, but it's an important one. I guess the simple answer is 10 years is a long time. I can't give you a commitment to a full 10, but I can tell you I'm not interested in going through this procedure again anytime soon.
Okay, you know, again, we would hope that we have to go through confirmation. And if that's not a position you really wanted, because then I would hope that you would wait for that position to come up and not just take a position just to, I'm not sure what that description that you use. But you know, because you were on the bench 2016, you applied 2017, you applied 2018, 2019, 2021. So I just hope, and actually 10 years is a long time, and I know things can come up, but I just hope that, you know, the first year or two years after you're in this position that you're going to apply for something else. Because, you know, every person that comes before us in confirmation, they tell us how passionate they are to sit in the District Court, that it's the people's court and that's where they want to be. And then to come back in just in a year and then apply for another court, it just doesn't seem genuine to us.
I understand.
That's where you really want to be. And the courts need, you know, as backlog, as you know, and the workload is tough. We'd like to see some consistency there, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you know, I would be asking the same question to all of the nominees today. And I ask that question to everyone that comes before us because we've seen that happen numerous times.
Right. I will not say, and I don't think I said six years ago that I have a particular passion for District Court, although I frankly do. I love the fact that we moved so many cases through and under the guidance of Judges Richardson and Lee and Mito May right now, a lot of the backlog concerns have been cleared out. And I was not, you know, the lead in any of that, but that was definitely instrumental part, particularly in the effectation of the remote hearings that were really the brainchild primarily of Judge Paul Wong and Judge Sherry Eha. But again, I've considered one of the preferred remote judges because I'm a technophile, to be quite frank. That's the primary reason. But I would point out, Senator Kim, that each of the applications you point out, 2019 was after I had spent about a year doing Circuit civil matters. And 2021 was
Okay, I get it. You don't have to go into all of that.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Let me just ask you quickly about your pro bono work. I haven't seen anything in your application the last three years. Was there something significant going on? You didn't have any pro bono work?
Well, I mean, as you know, or may not know, I shouldn't presume, but a big chunk of my income is based on, was based on education up to 2016. I've always been interested in education, not just college prep, but towards the law as well. My work with Community College in the paralegal program. So as far as pro bono work I do as a judge, it's primarily public speaking, particularly for the school kids whenever I can get time for that. The junior judges program, when it's in effect. We've suspended it for a while, as far as I know. And certainly mock trial judging, which I do every year. So to the extent that I'm able to do pro bono work as a judge, it tends to be educational in nature.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Members, further questions? Okay, I have I have several questions. The first is, what is your perspective on adjudications involving decisions to address an individual's mental health condition, including petitions for involuntary commitment, assisted community treatment, and guardianship?
Those are difficult to generalize about, Mr. Vice Chair. First off, they're all important. And I have seen through the Mental Health Court, both at the circuit and the district levels, how much a difference can be made if somebody is subject to that. In other words, they're out in the street and they don't believe they need medication, but that's because they're schizophrenic. And a lot of times, when they're brought into the system and the Attorney General gets them either involuntarily committed or at least gets them under community's, you know, community release, but conditional release, that the medication can make a huge difference. So it's a conflict, to be honest. On one hand, you don't want to force things on anybody. On the other hand, it makes a difference, and somebody's not really in their right manner to refuse treatment if they're not mentally sound. So as far as adjudications go, they have to be careful, they have to be individualized. But I've seen the difference that can be made with supervision. There are cases we have dealt with in courtroom 7D here every day, primarily Judge Shimizono at this point, where some of these people have been under community supervision for an assault case that was 10 or 12 years ago. Without some level of conditional supervision, they would probably recidivate or decompensate and wind up crazy and punching people again. So it's a balancing test. But I have to say that for my own part, I would tend to err on the side of getting people well rather than letting people wander around free. One, that's the choice that's been given to us. Fortunately, it's not one that comes up often. Most of the time, people who need help know that they need help. Even if some part of them is fighting against it, they'll take steps to follow the conditions. And that's why we have such success, even at District Court level, with some of these older cases where the conditional release has gone so long. And yet, at the same point, at the same time, the belief is if there wasn't some regular checkup, these people would stop taking their medications and decompensate.
I guess it depends on perspective, Judge, because you know, that might be rare. That might be a rare occurrence in the District Court. But you know, you mentioned earlier that, you know, one of the factors is whether they're mentally sound or not. The standard for fitness is rather restrictive. And and so you know, I guess it's a this is a relative conversation because the context in which you're seeing some of these individuals is under some sort of criminal matter as opposed to
Usually.
Yeah, whether they're actually on the street and of sound mind and able to make decisions. So in follow-up, I am interested in how you would describe your approach to cases where the defendant appears to have a mental health, mental health or substance abuse condition that impacts their decision-making ability?
On every single time that's come up, I can't think of a single time that it that I vary from this. I rely heavily on the medical professionals and the psychological professionals and social workers. I'm not I'm not in a position, I don't think any of us should be in a position to make an ad hoc decision about somebody else's health and freedom and desire perhaps to avoid self-medication based on their testimony in court or their demeanor in court on one particular day for just a couple of hours. So I've always relied on the testimony and opinions given to me by the experts, many of whom have been with the court system much longer than I've even been a lawyer. So that's pretty much what I do. Again, I'm trying to think if there was ever a time I got away from that, but there really hasn't yet.
But you do have, you do have a certain measure of discretion in this area.
Yes.
And perhaps in your experience in District Court, but likely in your experience on the Circuit Court, you do see these individuals multiple times over, you know, short to long-term periods, and you are able to make your own assessments as to whether they've decompensated or improved significantly when they're before you.
Now, one of the last jury trials I ever handled here in the Eighth Division or Eleventh Division, excuse me. But the point is, we had a jury trial for open use of heroin in the Olive Park. The officer were just standing there watching her do it. And this was, I think, her third or fourth time just before me in that one year. So in that case, I would say I have a strong familiarity with her her demeanor. She can present very, very effectively, eloquently even. But at the same time, she's suffering long-term mental problems. This all mattered on public record, by the way, because of long-term drug use. So even in a situation like that, I relied primarily on the mental health professionals' opinions of her because they took into account everything that I saw in court. I wasn't surprised by anything she did, nor have I been yet by anybody I've had to judge in District or Circuit Court for those kinds of considerations. I just have to remind myself, I'm not a mental health professional. However many of these cases I see, I'm not an expert in any of this, and I shouldn't think of myself as an expert in any of this until and unless some point I actually become certified. So again, the short answer is it depends, but the true answer is I don't want to say as a general rule, I'm always going to rely on the experts, but they're experts for a reason. And so far, I haven't found a reason to depart from it, not even in a case like this one where I saw the same person for three separate conditional release hearings.
Well, so you bring up an interesting point because when it comes to, for example, civil commitment, like I said, there are very restrictive standards in which medical professionals need to follow in assessing whether someone is competent. And you know, unless you disagree, there are instances in the community where an individual who's deemed medically competent may not have decision-making ability or who might be a predicate likely to either end up on the street and decompensate or potentially, potentially commit another criminal act.
Right.
And that's an area in which I would assess, I would posit that you might have far more experience and perspective than a medical professional who on a specific date at a specific time is making an assessment as to someone's fitness.
Right. And that's would be because
For example, the example you just mentioned.
Right. It would be because I also have the perspective, not only of this person's condition, but of the potential threat that a person, not this one in particular, her credentials are all directly, she wasn't a property criminal. But we see a lot of those come through District Court. So in a situation like that, it would of necessity be the judge's job to take into account not just the effect on the person, but the effect on the community as well. Now, if I recall, because I haven't been in a civil commitment case in a while, dangerousness to public, dangerousness to public is a consideration. Inconvenience to the public is not. But it's a practical concern. We're dealing with people who often harass and hassle the same businesses, accrue property crimes. If not shoplifting, then at least trespassing and coming back to the same businesses over and over again. And they come before me, prosecutor works out something in a reign with a public defender, usually for time served or at most a week. And the complaint that I've heard and seen is that they go back to the same place and offend again. Though addressing that goes a bit beyond, I think, the scope of your question, but it is a concern of mine, and I think it's legitimate to
Well, but you are sort of laying out your thought process for these situations where you might depart from a medical recommendation.
Right.
And perhaps hold over someone who might present dangerousness versus inconvenience to the public. Is that fair to say?
Yes, or if if releasing them with conditions also includes the condition they stay the heck away from a certain neighborhood where there are a known problem, then that's something we can do as part of conditional release, as part of intake services, supervised release prior to trial at the circuit level, much more than the district level, during probation, again, at the circuit level more than the district level because we give a person probation for, you know, criminal trespass. The maximum we can give them is six months. That's not enough time to force treatment onto them or, you know, do anything meaningful before they're released from probation by operation of law. I've never seen it quite work at that level with that timeframe.
Okay. Members, any?
Just follow up on that. So your response that you could put some kind of requirement that they don't go back to the same place, but aren't you just moving them around then because they're going to go and harass some other establishment? Because that's just in their nature at this point, or their need to do that?
If it is in their nature, then yes, they'll go to someplace else and they'll become somebody else's problem, and they'll get picked up again. And at the circuit level, if I was sitting on a criminal calendar, in all likelihood, could be brought before me again so that I know that they're the ones that keep messing up, no matter where they are. And that might be, you know, a basis for pre-trial detainment. A lot of that's going to be up to the executive branch, up to prosecutors. I understand that there's a hesitancy, and I've only heard this indirectly, to utilize the habitual property crime statute against people who are just repeat shoplifters at the petty misdemeanor level. I don't, you know, I can say that if they decided to to pursue some of these people on their fourth offense, hit them with a felony, at least if they came before me. And frankly, I don't think many circuit judges would bring the hammer down on them just for that. Because what that does is it places them under the supervision of intake services at the circuit level. And if they get perhaps even a deferral, some of them may be deferral eligible, but probation for five years, that's a much broader range of supervision over which we can address whatever issues they may have. Why are they offending so much? Is it because they're mentally ill and would treatment and medication help? Or is it because they have a drug problem and forced assessment and then treatment thereafter? That might help. That's the kind of thing we can't do very effectively at the Circuit Court scale that we can do effectively, and I've seen it work effectively. I mean, it's at District Court level, I'm sorry, Circuit Court level, where we have the broader timeframes.
I think though, in general, and not just for mental issues, but as a whole, where you, the media will report on some kind of crime taking place and say that this individual, you know, had been arrested X amount of times and let go, and the community, and I know my constituents are up in arms about that and wondering why they are given so many chances because, you know, they're subject to these kinds of robberies or assaults and so forth that go on. And what was the take? And I know we're trying to put them into rehab and so forth, but at the same time, you know, the victims that they leave behind them.
It looks like.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure, you know, as to how lenient the court should be in some of these repeat offenders.
Right. Well, it depends on what they're finally in front of the court for. If this is their 23rd par closure violation because they're homeless and they have no place else to sleep, I'll concede it, I will be fairly lenient on them. And so is the prosecutor's office. I'm not trying to point fingers, but I'm saying we all recognize these people have problems. But when you take somebody who has committed a robbery, who has a number of arrests, you know, I liken it to calling marijuana a gateway drug. Yes, they have many arrests, but a lot of these people with many arrests aren't and never will be felons who actually threaten people's lives. Some of them will be, no question. But until they reach that level, I'm not looking to throw somebody, you know, in jail just because he's got no place else to live.
Well, I, you know, aside of not having any place to live, I mean, there's a lot of crime that goes on by all sorts of individuals. And do we wait until they become more violent and then do something about it? You know, that's the concern. And it's like, they may have been arrested 10 times, but they may have committed crimes 20 times because they probably didn't get caught for those other times. Twenty times because they probably didn't get caught for those other times.
Right.
Right? I mean, so there's all those things to consider, uh, and I'm just telling you what is on the minds of my constituents. Door to door.
Absolutely, it looks terrible, I admit.
Yeah, and and they're concerned about their safety. Let me, can I just go on to one other tangent here? Um, what are your thoughts about? Um. Doing legislative policy from the bench. You know, we set the policy and the judicial uh branch, the ones to go ahead and uphold the law and interpret what we do. And to look at what the legislative intent, but we've seen over the years that there's sometimes a tendency by. Um, ju- some judges to want to do legislative policy from the bench. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, understanding I'm speaking for myself and after the judiciary as a whole, I'm. I'm a big fan of the separation of powers. I'm not. If I think that I'm legislating from the bench, if I make a certain ruling, my inclination will be to not rule that way. Um, because. Well, as I said, a big fan of separation of powers, I'm not here to tell you what your jobs are. And I also try to avoid to tell the executive branch what its job is. Understand what I just said about the uh. Habitual property crime, that's just something that occurred to me as a way that these things could be handled when I started seeing these people coming to district court. On multiple shoplifting and trespass cases. I'm not saying that they're wrong for for not wanting to, you know, prosecute Jean Valjean for stealing a loaf of bread. But I am saying how we would deal with it. So the short answer to your question is I'm very much against doing anything that even looks like legislation from the bench.
Certainly appreciate that. And and I would urge the judiciary, if they think that there is something with the with the statute that needs fixing. Um, then certainly we are always open to that, so.
Right. Well, I believe we limit ourselves to just commentary before adoption. Anything beyond that. Begins to look like we're acting in an advisory capacity. I I should warn you, I would be against that too. Because we don't like to prejudge anything that's pending or impending, ethically can't comment on. That skirts that line because in a way we're telling you what we think you should change law to before the issue has become ripe and come before us.
But the the judiciary does hold these uh workshops and these um. Uh, group groups about, you know, certain kinds of laws and certain issues and, you know. What are some of the suggestions that come out of these um talking groups? Working groups are stuff that we need to look at.
Okay.
Those are ways in which the judiciary can, um.
Legitimately, yes. I agree. Thank you.
Uh, as a follow-up to that, the there are instances where as as I I. Seems to me especially recently that uh. It's become apparent that there are many aspects to legal practice, in particular trial practice. That facilitate outcomes that may or may not uh fall in, fall into. Alignment with legislative intent. And in those circumstances, uh, it could potentially be. Very significant for the judiciary to. Uh, provide perspective on how logistically or operationally those aspects of practice. Are carried out and what the potential uh consequences could be of legislative level policy changes. So at what point do you? Where is the line there between making sure that you are not taking an improper. Uh, advisory capacity or that the judiciary is putting its finger on the scale from a policy standpoint and the real. Functional outcomes that happen when policy changes are made on trial practice. And the outcomes thereafter.
That's. It's not a fine line. It's a very wide gray line is all I can tell you about that because we're talking about anything in particular. A case that uh. But it sounds as if some of what you're talking about is what was brought up by the Obrero decision very recently. Um, our position at the district and circuit level is the case is what it is and we have to adjust to it. So. But again.
But as a matter of trial practice, I can get some very di- different outcomes depending on the circuit.
Absolutely.
Depending on the charge, the defendant, the defendant's history.
Right.
And the positions taken by the prosecutors and the uh. And the defense counsel.
Right, as uh are the logistic issues of. Of relitigating the matter at grand jury all over again, of having grand jury slots available all over again. They are practical considerations. I don't have an easy answer to that, Senator, but I do. Know that uh to the extent we can at the judiciary, we're doing everything we can to to facilitate it. Um, but the flip side to that is. It's clear and and again, since Obrero was the most recent example of this. Um, it's clear what the legislative intent was. In adopting and changing the the constitution to allow preliminary hearings to be doable, to create rules, uh, we created rules, but the statutes. Enabling preliminary hearings, the fact that it's left out of one. Yeah, it's clear that the the legislative intent wasn't to keep them illegal. But the decision was made, not by me, of course, but I'll abide by it as I'm required to do, as we all are. Um, that, you know, this one missing piece, there's no way around it. No impari materia that would allow us to get around it. And so that's a decision made. It's frustrating. It's hard on all of us. I realize that doesn't give you much solace since we're the ones who issued the ruling that makes it hard. But if nothing else, it's brought to to light an issue that uh. You know, Chair Rhodes pointed out with his submission of a possible. Uh, revision that would prevent the prosecution from presenting the same evidence to multiple grand juries. And to a judge at the district court level and potentially even for information charging. Um, that had not been addressed before. Now, I'm not going to say that's the civil.
Maybe I'll I'll try and save you right here before we go any further down this path.
Okay.
My specific question would be, how do you view your role as a judge? Uh, in protecting the public interest. Uh, in gray areas of trial or legal practice. Where there are these substantive questions about legislative intent in the execution of or administration of cases like that.
Right. Well, understand at the judge's level, I'm making a ruling based on a motion that was brought. Before me at that point. And that's where, as I said, um. I'm not interested in legislating from the bench. I'm very much against it for my own part. Um, so I will take into account uh the clear legislative intent and the. I have to speak in generalities because the whole pending impending thing, but um, the issue comes up and. I gave a lot of weight to what the clear legislative intent would be. Now, that's not binding necessarily. It's not necessarily. Uh, decisive. Every case will be decided and must be decided on its own individual merits. But there are considerations. The alarming statistic that there would be a hundred and seventy, now down to a hundred sixty. Potential felons who would be released pursuant to dismissals under this decision. And I thank you, Senator, for um pointing out uh the application of H R P P twelve G to the situations like that. Um, and the strict limitations that circuit judges who have applied that rule. Have placed, in other words, giving the timeline, giving the prosecution strict timelines in which to bring grand jury. Uh, or bring the case before grand jury if that's their only option, as well as their cooperation and our cooperation. In the judiciary and making additional sessions available. But the fact that they aren't using all those sessions tells us that. If nothing else, uh, the urgency and risk to the public isn't so great. That we've had to fill up every single potential grand jury slot in order to clear out that backlog of potential dismissal.
Well, so if there was a situation where the 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 risk was present, how would you view? Uh. The action that you would take as it corresponds to your duties as a judge to ensure. That the overall system nets.
Right.
The protection of the public.
Well, again, at the judge level, I generally, I'd simply apply H R P P twelve G and say, look, you've got a specified time. Um, and as we discussed, there's no criteria to what a specified time is, but we're looking at habeas corpus. Challenges if we don't get specific and take things into consideration. My approach, um, not only at circuit but at district level, is again been somewhat cooperative. So I'll just ask on the record of the prosecution. Look. We've got some grand jury slots available next week. How quickly can you get your witnesses together? Because let's be frank, there are only three witnesses for trial. You can bring them in to grand jury same as you did preliminary hearing in a week or two. If that's the case, I'll give you thirty days at most. That's a specified time. It takes into account the specifics of the case as well as the practicalities of uh the particular prosecution. But without saying that on a technicality, this guy gets to go free. Um, I will say though, one consideration is. Just because a guy is free on bail, does he get put on bail again? Because with, in moving for dismissal, he effectively. Either gets his bail money back, but if it's a bond, he's lost that money. And I'll take that into consideration too and setting bail at the refile case. To the extent that I can. So there are a number of considerations that we go into dealing with these cases on an individual level. Um, and these are just off the top of my head, quite frankly, but the important thing is that we take into account the specifics, not only of. The rights of the defendant and danger to the public, but the practicalities that are afforded by the judges themselves and the and the courts themselves. And making available additional grand jury sessions to address the issue brought up by effectively making preliminary hearings. Um, illegal, for want of a better term.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. All right, we'll move to uh the next nominee. J C one Timothy E. Hall for consideration and confirmation to the district court of the first circuit. For a term to expire in six years. Uh, first up in person, uh, testifying in support, Crystal London.
Uh, good morning, Vice Chair Kilhulole, Senator Gabbert, Senator Kim and Senator Lee. It's nice to see you all in person again. Um, so I thank you first off for taking into consideration my written testimony that was submitted in support of Judge Hall. Um, but I just wanted to follow up with a little bit more um insight and and what I think that you should know. That as a district uh court judge, Judge Hall will not only have the cool honor to serve our community. And to ensure that even the smallest of cases are heard and heard effectively and presided over effectively. But my experience with district court judges, um, that I appeared before, um, that I appeared before when I first started practicing law in two thousand and four. Um, was that these judges took on the role of mentor as well. Uh, mentors to teach us through their rulings, their examples, their high expectations to be good lawyers. How to advocate for our clients, how to timely file motions. Um, and how to make objections and to be the good litigators that we needed to be to effectively represent our client. Who knew the law and could effectively communicate that in a courtroom. So the judge's expectations and sometimes scoldings, sometimes their encouragement. Is how a lot of us shaped our practice. I have no doubt that Judge Hall will serve a role, uh, serve the role of mentor for many of our young attorneys coming up. And through the ranks. And I have no doubt that he will rise to the task to do it well, um, given that he is one of my own mentors. And given his experience, I also have no doubt that he will also hold the experienced bar to task and have ex- have high expectations of their practice. So with that said, in consideration of my letter as well and everything that I've expressed there, I strongly urge you to support his nomination. I thank you for considering my testimony, both written and oral, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Amy Agbayani in support.
Um, I stand by my written testimony, testimony as strongly as support in post.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, next online, we have Curtis Hall in support.
Aloha, Vice Chair Kilhulolli and members of the Senate Judiciary Committee. Yes, my name is Curtis Hall and I'm here to voice my strong support of Timothy Hall's judicial confirmation. In full disclosure, Tim is my younger brother, ten years younger. And therefore, my support comes from a lifelong observation of his solid character. Tim's goal, in fact, early in his legal career, has been to be a judge and I believe that he will be a good one for several reasons. First, his legal knowledge and professional experience in and out of the courtroom are exemplary. He has shared his knowledge and experience formally as an adjunct professor at the U H Manoa's Richardson School of Law. And I have met some of his former students and they've had positive things to say about his course and his legal and courtroom courtroom knowledge. Next, I have witnessed Tim's integrity and sense of fairness and justice from an early age. Even before entering the legal profession, his strong moral compass has remained steady and unchanged. Also, Tim is extremely hardworking and dedicated to being the best in his field. I've witnessed this trait since he was an undergraduate student up through law school and as an attorney. And lastly, I am highly confident of Tim's ability to fulfill the responsibilities and duties of the position of district court judge. He has all of the characteristics you would want in a judge and his experience as a per diem judge is evidence of his judicial temperament. Diligence and commitment to his profession. I urge you to confirm. Timothy Hall to the judicial position of judge of the district course court first circuit. Thank you for allowing me to share my support and my hello to the Senate Judiciary Committee for your time and effort in this important selection process.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. James Tabe in support.
The committee, my name is James Tabe and with the Office of the Public Defender. I stand by my written testimony and strong support of Mr. Hall. I am available for any questions if needed. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much. That's all the uh registered in-person testimony. Uh, that we have here. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify on the nominee? Please, please come. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify before we move to the bar association? Please proceed. Please come up to the front.
Um, so hey, um, Senate Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Um, I'm testifying in so.
Can you please state your name?
My name is Jizhi Shong and um I'm a constituent of um Kalihie Palama. And um I am a safety coordinator and a captain of our N S W, our neighborhood security watch. And um, so. In regards to the things that were um talked about today, um. Uh, so I would like to provide comments to help the Senate to guide their decision on. Um. Um, nominating a good judge. Um, so I work closely with. At the front lines of safety and crimes. So what we observe is a lot of the things that. Um, he had spoken of, um, businesses. Um, in Chinatown get harassed by um belligerent homeless people and also, um. We have just a wide range of crimes and safety concerns ranging from truancy. Um, trespasses, fires, burglaries, and the residents and the constituents of our neighborhoods. Are um, under a lot of pressure and also, um. Frankly, very um traumatized from a lot of um the concerns. And we know that the Senate or the um legislative branch has the power to. Um, check the judiciary and so we would like to just present our concerns that. Um. There should be a strong candidate who is willing to collaborate with those in the community. And also with social service organizations, um nonprofits, health clinics, medical professionals. And um collaborate with legislators to create effective and efficient public policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who would like to testify on the nominee? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to note for the record, there were forty-four individuals who submitted written testimony in support. One with comments, the Bar Association, which will uh be up next, and one individual in opposition. And I'd like to have the Bar Association up, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. And I think today you're the chair, even though you're normally the vice chair. So I've been calling you chair, that's okay. Um, on behalf of the Hawaii State Bar Association, the Board of Directors. How for the members of the association have found that Mr. Timothy Hall is qualified and we recommend him for the position of district court for the first circuit. Any questions?
Thank you very much, members. Any questions for the Bar Association or for any of the testifiers? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to the nominee.
Hello, Chair Kilhulolli. Members of the committee, Senator Lee, Senator Kim, Senator Gabbert. My name is Tim Hall and first of all, I'd like, before I forget, I'd like you to introduce my family that made it here with me. My name is Tim Hall and first of all, I'd like, before I forget, I'd like you to introduce my family that made it here with me. Uh, starting from the, to your right is my son, Preston. He flew in from San Francisco to be here. My wife, Rolly Anne. My daughter Lauren. Her husband, Jamil. And I think back in the corner over there, just walked in is my my sister's eldest child, Amy. I am a family man. My family is very important to me. And as you can see, I I'm important to them and that's why they're here. A little background about myself, I was born and raised on the island of Koi. I hail from the wonderful school of uh wonderful town of Waimea, proud graduate of Waimea High School. Uh Senator Kochi would uh be remiss if I did not mention my affiliation to his alma mater. I got my undergraduate degree from Creighton University and then I came back to the William S. Richardson School of Law where I received my Juris Doctorate. I'm the youngest of four siblings. You saw my oldest brother. Um, uh, for some reason, I'm the youngest, but I have the most white hair. And I mentioned this and it it seems weird rolling off my tongue, but I I I'm come from a single parent home. And it it's weird because I never felt that way. My father passed away when suddenly when I was twelve, uh leaving my mother with four year, four children to take care of. And I'm proud to say that all four of us received college degrees and graduate degrees. While I was on this earth for just a few, you know, twelve years with my father, these are the lessons that I learned from him and I take with him today, he's with me right now. He welcomed everyone and treated every person with uh grace and love. When I was a a young child, he welcomed uh international students into our home. I remember two in particular, Lai Bubatambi from Nigeria and Nassim Qasim from from Pakistan. And as a six-year-old, I I jumped in Lai Bubatambi's lap and I traced my fingers over his tribal scars. And this is the during the height of the civil rights movement. And he he was flabbergasted because he came into the stranger's family and the first thing I did was touch his scars on his face and ask him if it hurt when he got it. Uh, that's what my father has taught me, that we're 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 no better than anyone else that we are walking on this earth with or sharing this earth with. A lesson from my mother, my my brother talked about a moral compass and I would have to tell you proudly that I receive it from her. With her, I've learned strength in the face of adversity. She is the strong, she's not even close to five feet tall, but she's the strongest person I know. At ninety-two years old, she's still driving and attending lines, club meetings. Uh, and um a- as my niece would say, my grandma is a hammer. And and that's what I get from them, my 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 strength I got from my parents. I I won't delve into my career, but you I did share my uh resume with you. I do have to say that as as a career public defender, you may have some concerns about whether or not I would be a lenient judge, whether or not I would be able to be fair to both sides. And I can tell you, based on the almost a year and a little more than a year that I've served as a per diem judge. And if you ask the public defenders, I am not a lenient judge. And uh I would say that I am a law and order judge. And I I value public safety, that to me is first and foremost. I am a a citizen of this state and town. And I live on the outskirts of White Key and I see crime, just like everybody else does. So so when I my my view and approach from the bench always is that public safety will be number one. My, w- why I applied to become a judge? I, as my brother said, I I I always felt as as um a young person and and a young attorney that I wanted to do more. You can advocate for your client and I believe I was successful doing that. But I always felt like I I would like to do more. A a judge is in a position to meet out justice for which an attorney cannot. And this has been a long journey for me. I've been applying pretty much for every position since twenty twenty-ten, I believe. It's a twelve-year journey. And I I'm finally here. I I'm I have to admit, last night, I I had, you know, I was enjoying this process, meeting with senators, discussing my views. But uh o- on the precipice of of this moment, I I started to panic and um I I have um be, I think because I've wanted this for so long and I've been trying for so long, i- it means so much to me to be here. Uh, the 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 journey that I've had. And and I can tell you that as a judge, what what would be important to me, as as Ms. Glendon said, is is to mentor young attorneys. I do have high expectations of the attorneys that have appeared before me. And I do try to uh teach them as as many judges before me have taught me. And I would I would like to think that especially at in at the district court level, you know, in the civil uh court, most of the participants are unrepresented. In when I sit on the uh restraining order calendar and the small claims court calendar, a majority of them are unrepresented. And what I want them to do when they walk out of the courtroom is that they understood exactly what happened. They may not be satisfied with what the results were, but I want to make sure that they understood what just happened. I I, as an attorney, I've seen so many times, um as I'm sitting and waiting for my case, you know, the person walk is is walking out and is turning to his attorney and say, what just happened? Um, and they have no idea what happened in front of the judge. And it is my responsibility to make sure that every participant has an opportunity, a fair shake before me and that they understand the result. Uh, finally, I would like to thank the Chief Justice for first giving me an opportunity to serve as a per diem judge. Uh, when when I when I left, when I when I started uh s- sitting, from the moment that I I came and sat on the bench, I realized that this is what I wanted to do. And within a few weeks, I went to Judge Mito May. And I told her, I want to do this every day. I know I have my obligations to my firm, but I'm just telling you where my heart is. I want to do this every day. I will, I I pointed and I I I gestured to the to the District Court Building. And I said, this is wh- this is where I want my home to be. I want, I and I cannot tell you with any more conviction. And she said, Tim, we knew that right away because the staff told us. The amount of passion that you have for this job. And um to to preempt uh um Senator Kim's question, um where 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 I will 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 I, you know, I have no desire. I although I've applied for every judge yet, you you can understand that I wanted to be a judge in a worst way. But when I sat down with uh Chief Justice, and this is even before the governor made his pick, he had asked me, Tim, um, you know, you've made three lists. Which which one, if you had your choice, which one would you pick? And I told him, I have to be honest with you, uh, Mr. Chief Justice, it's a district court. I I I don't want to be anywhere else. And I will not, I'm too old to apply for any more positions. I I am, I am where I want to be. And with that, I thank you for your time and I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Members' questions?
Thank you very much and certainly appreciate your passion. I can feel your passion. Um, and that's, a- and I sense that you are a district court judge, a kind of judge that we need on the district court. Um, having said that, and of course, you've also said that actually you first applied in nineteen ninety-six.
I think I was just testing the waters at that point because I had only been an attorney for
Nine years.
Nine years, yes.
So and then, um, so yeah, that was going to be my question because then you applied for family court five times and you applied for circuit court seven times and ten times district court. So I guess that's district court is where you really want to be, right?
Yes, it it it's it's where I I cut my teeth as an attorney. It's where I learned how to do trials. It's where I learned how to handle ca- you know, um, uh, an extreme amount of cases and is where I learned that, you know, being an attorney and my wife learned that as well. It is a twenty-four-seven job.
Yeah, district court is, you've got to work hard and a lot of attorneys want to move on. So I really respect uh those judges that serve on district court because it is the people's court and and you know, you're the face of the of the courts for people who have never been before the court before or have no clue what it's like to be before the court. And um, you know, many have very bad experiences with some of the judges that they first see. So we want to see um compassionate judges, but also firm judges that that's going to be able to de- defend the people. Uh, and I like what you said, that you are, you know, for law and order and public safety is number one. I think that's important and I think my constituents would be happy um to hear that. Uh, so you know, you started though your practice this year though, right? So what's going to happen? You just started your practice and you didn't anticipate you were going to get picked. Is that what happened?
Uh, uh, so the um during my la- the last interview with the Judicial Selection Commission, one of the commissioners asked me, Tim, uh, you know, you've applied for your, we're interviewing you for family, circuit and district. Which which one would be your choice? I and and I don't know, which one do you think you're more most likely to be selected at? And I and I said, you know, my track card, I'm more likely to not be selected for any of these. And and that's why I I've applied, you know, I've applied so many times. And I said, you know, the reason why I keep applying and people have told me, why do you keep applying? Because every time you get a call to say the governor calls you or his chief of staff or the CJ and they tell you, I'm so sorry, Tim, but you know, I'm going to go with someone else. And I always say, you know, it is hard, I I have, it's heartbreaking to hear for something that you really want and then to hear someone. And and I've a, so what you see there is the years that I've applied, but not the amount of positions that I've applied. I've counted over thirty judges that are sitting in the First Circuit where I've made final lists with. So I'm, my my rough estimate is I've made over five thirty final lists. And um but it's because I I, every time an opening comes up, I believe I have something to offer. I believe I can be an asset to the judiciary and that's why I keep applying. I I'm willing and I was willing to risk all of the heartbreak, all of the disappointment to keep trying because this is something that I wanted and I'll I'll, I'm not a quitter, so it's not. It was in it, it wasn't in my DNA to just walk away.
Well, you're certainly the poster child for never give up.
Yes, I I am. It's it's not if you once, yeah. So I've changed the saying, it's not if you first, you don't succeed. If at the thirtieth time you don't succeed, try, try again.
Well, persistence is something that we will certainly give you. But so what 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 happened with your law firm and you started it this year and it's just a single law firm, just yourself?
And and
Pack up and
I will have to close my practice, but it's been done before.
Right.
Um, the reason why I learned, I I had a really good uh situation at Imanaka Sato, they're a great firm. They're a family oriented firm. And I just love everyone there. I love the staff. But I was sitting maybe one, two, three or four days a month as a per diem. And as I told you, I knew right away I wanted to do that every day. And in order to do that, and and I just felt that I couldn't have my firm pay me a salary to could to serve more days, sit more days as a per diem judge. So with the encouragement of my family, even my son, he said, hell, you know, you you're going to lose lose your firm salary, but I'll let me invest in you. You know, they're they're willing to, they were willing to help in what whatever way, you know, they could. And so with their blessing, I I told the partners that I wanted to leave, I got their blessing. And I opened my own firm in order to not impose on Imanaka to have to pay me a salary.
Thank you for that.
Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to our final nominee. Uh, J C two, John Alberto Montalbano uh for consideration and confirmation to the District Family Court of the First Circuit uh for a term to expire in six years. Aside from the Bar Association, I don't see any registered in-person uh testifiers. Is there anyone present who would like to testify on the nominee? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to note, uh, one individual testifying in opposition, sixteen in support. And uh, all with written comments. And then I'd like to ask the Bar Association to come up, please.
Thank you. Good morning again. And um, as you may know, this is our last judicial appointment for the year of two thousand and twenty-three. So I really just wanted to thank you, members. Um, this process is so important to the members of the bar and I really thank you for your time, your questions and helping us um with these judicial nominees that have just been, uh, I think outstanding this year. So um, as for Mr. Juan Montalbano, the H S B A on behalf, the H S B A Board on behalf of its members finds him qualified and recommends him for the position of Family District Court Judge for the First Circuit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, members. Any questions for the Bar Association? Okay, let's have the nominee.
Morning, Vice Chair Kilho Kaloli, Senator Lee, Senator McCall Kim, Senator Gabbert. My name is John Alberto Montalbano. I am a nominee for the District Court on the Family Court Bench. And I want to thank you for your time in considering my application. Uh, my family immigrated to the island of Maui in Punene a few generations ago. And today, I'm the first person of my family to have graduated college, achieve a graduate degree and serve in the professional ranks as a lawyer and the honor to my path to my stationary life was not direct, made some mistakes along the way. But more importantly, I've learned from those mistakes and I carry with me three tenants from my experience that nothing is going to change in your life until the individual wants to make the change. Number two, that you are in charge of your destiny if you have the proper resources and tools to understand how to make that change uh come to come to life. And number three, that everybody deserves a second chance. Uh, I've presided, prosecuted, defended and clerked in every genre of the District Court. I have served in a capacity as a JAG in my military role as a Army Reserve Officer. And I humbly uh request your support for my nomination today, subject to your questions.
Thank you. Members, questions for the nominee?
Go ahead.
Senator Kim.
This morning? No, it's good afternoon already. Thank you very much for being here. Um, so my family court, is that your first choice family court or?
Well, the the correct answer, Senator, is um, I want to be in the District Court. And um, in my experience, the District Court is the uh, has the most interface with our communities. It has the volume of individuals that come to the court with life's problems, life's problems that everybody experiences. And then how we deal with those problems is how we change society and effectuate change. Uh, I'm happy to serve wherever the Chief Justice needs me in the District Court realm. He has asked me to serve in the Family Court. Why? I do have extensive experience as a litigator and also a law clerk in that genre of law. So um, yes, I'm happy to serve in Family Court.
Yeah, I've thought about your experience in Family Court, um, but I noticed that you only applied for Family Court once. You applied for Circuit Court once, but then you did apply nine times for the District Court. So it shows me that that's where you want to be, but then actually you are being nominated for Family Court. So um, you'd rather be in District Court.
And I think that I understand your analysis based on the factors. However, there's lots of decisions. And I think that I understand your analysis based on the factors. However, there's lots of decisions that go into whether I'm going to make an application. Not all of them are dependent upon what court the opening is with. There was a period during COVID when I stopped applying, because I didn't feel that my desire to seek a judicial office overcame anybody's life problems and writing letters and all the things that you have to do to perfect an application. Uh, it just so happens that the slots that were open for the district court were both district and family, and I've been selected for family. So it's not that I had uh, an aversion to applying for family court, and I haven't applied every single time. Uh, for me, it's been a growth process. I've been a per diem since twenty-fourteen, and throughout my time as a per diem. I can tell you, the judge that I am today is much different than I was back in twenty-thirteen. And it's a growth process for me uh to arrive today to understand exactly what is needed uh as you take your role on the bench. Um, so i- i- it wasn't an aversion to family court, it was just the way it worked out.
So how different are you from when you first started?
Well, I think that if you were talking to people that appeared before me early on in my career, I was uh too aggressive on the bench, and that's because I came from a role as a prosecutor. As a prosecutor, we run the corpse. And when I was practicing as a judge early on, I confused that role with being the one who sits above it all and tries to manage whatever the decisions are. Uh, in some cases, when individuals were uh not moving the calendar as quickly as I would like, I think I may have stepped on their toes by taking charge. And now I understand that that's the wrong thing to do. Um, that was like in twenty-fourteen. Uh, now, I understand that, and I try to recognize everybody's limitations or specialties in, in, in doing their job, and not interfere with the process as I did then.
Well, let me just follow up into the question I asked earlier about legislating, setting legislative policy from the bench. Obviously, there are certain things that, as a judge, um. You know, there's a three branches of government, and so do you have any thoughts about that?
Uh, well, I, I hate to um go to the age-old civil one-on-one, but there's three branches of government. Legislature creates the laws, the executive enforces the laws, and judiciary interprets the laws. The way the law is interpreted based on the facts that are presented, is my wrong, and I'm opposed to legislating from the bench.
Okay, just we've seen judges that did not agree with that statement, or maybe agreed but didn't practice it in that way. So I just want to ask that question to get it on the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. And I, and I do appreciate your passion um for the district court, and I know as part of the family court, the, the CJ can move you around within the district court, so.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sure you will get your chance as far as being on the district court benches now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? So I, I do have a follow-up question, as it relates to what you mentioned, you know, prior uh, well, uh, prior nominee mentioned that the line between uh legislating from the bench and making operational or logistical or functional practice decisions that have perhaps a similar outcome for the individual uh participants can, can be a really large gray area. And in family court, you are sometimes or sometimes often presented with situations where uh individuals are in very uh, are in crisis. Are, are in very contentious uh proceedings with close members of their family, sometimes you know, at the worst, in, in the worst point of their lives. And some of the decisions that you uh will be required to make from the bench will have really significant implications on those individuals and on their families. So how do you view the distinction once you're in that gray area? You know, messy divorces, for example, or custody proceedings where there's mental health or substance abuse or violence involved. Some of the determinations that you would need to make are going to have really significant impacts to the participants and their families. And so how do you view your role and the, you know, the implications that come from some of those decisions, given the fact that you you know, said it's not your intention to make policy decisions from the bench?
That's a lot to unpack, Senator, so let me take it one, one step at a time. I have practiced in criminal and family, and I agree with you that the most problematic of emotions that come uh before the court is in the family court. That's because when you're dealing with an individual's money or children, those are the most prized possessions they have, and it becomes very um can be very antagonistic. Uh, in my role as a litigator there, uh, and as a judge on the per diem bench in the civil calendar, I've always had a policy that when parties can come to their own agreements, it's best for everybody involved, so the state doesn't have to stick their hand into their lives and make the decisions for them. If that is not allowed, because the individuals are at odds ends and how to resolve issues. Sometimes I think by adjudicating certain facts in the spectrum of problems can help people come to terms with their, an agreement, and if that doesn't work, it depends on what the overarching legal policy is addressing those issues. For custody, it's best interest of the child. For monetary or property division, it's the case law and decisions a- and the legal uh rules that establish division of marital property. So um, I don't under- uh, uh, there, with that w- wide range of spectrum, um, I think I can come to a decision without legislating from the bench, because best interest of the child is foremost in the custody decisions, and there are black letter laws on the division of property.
Okay. Okay, members, any other questions? Senator Lee.
I just want, thank you. Well, I'm just curious if there are any situations you've encountered where you felt like your hands have been tied, or you didn't have a discretion that you would have liked to have had, eh, given the circumstances of a case?
You mean, as a, as a judge, or um? No, I, I don't think that I've had any situation where I felt that something should have been done with, which wasn't already codified for me in the statutes. I, I have heard lots of, I, I've watched a lot of um confirmation hearings, and I understand that there is an issue with mental health and drugs in our society. And the way that I view that is, you know, a petty misdemeanor crime for stupid in the park is a thirty-day jail sentence, right? And that's the maximum you're going to get. O triple C is not a substitute for mental health, and it's not a substitute for homelessness. So how we address that problem because of this revolving door of individuals that may stay thirty days or not, I believe it's a community effort. And I am very excited about the community courts that we are now uh rolling out in the district court that is going to go into the community and set up courts in the parks and other places where people are homeless or they can't make it to court. And I think that constant supervision with goals towards treatment or problem resolving, if it's anger management or drugs. And most importantly, the ability and the desire of the individual to change are things that can address that. And those are things that I think we're limited on in, in response to your question, because of funding, because maybe there's a federal grant for a little while, and then, then it runs out, and then we don't have the program anymore. Um, but I think that those types of programs are the most valid in effectuating change in the community, because it's constant resolution of issues brought to the same judge. You just send them to court, kick them out, you know, thirty days here and there, doesn't really affect change. And then the other piece of that is the individual wanting to change. So that's a lot more than we can adjudicate from the bench. It requires social services and other agencies to be involved. And uh, I know there are some programs that come and go, but that's my theory on not having enough resources to do what we need to do in the judiciary.
Thank you. I, I guess, going back to, I think um uh habitual statute, habitual like crime statutes, where there tends to be a little more uh strict um prescriptions at times, depending on circumstances. I, I have to imagine, I've, I'm neither an attorney certainly nor in the judiciary, so my perspective on this is somewhat limited, but I have to imagine there are situations where someone has triggered a habitual statute, because they've been a repeat offender for, you know, however many times. But the reason they're before you in that particular moment while triggering that same statute doesn't amount to the level of um severity for which they've perhaps encountered in the past. And I can't think of a specific situation um in real life where this has happened, but uh, at least that I'm aware of. But for someone who is a, a property um property crime-related uh defendant who's, who's has a long history of breaking and entering, or whatever it might be, but is there before you for a different reason that day, but because of that has triggered a habitual penalty, which could for example, limit the discretion that as a judge you might have to be able to put them into some sort of alternate course, um, but rather, you know, you're going to spend a year in jail, period. Uh, that's something which, I'm just hearing you talk earlier about some of your experience, I was wondering if you had ever encountered.
Yes, have, and the law's a law. And if it's met, and, and it's not only me, it's a prosecutor, if they're willing to downgrade the charge or change it to something else, but they leave it as habitual, and it's proven as habitual, I have to follow the law. And by the way, my discussion is not about violent crimes, robberies, or anything like that. I'm talking about the individuals that we see that are homeless, pay mental health, maybe property crimes, and perhaps, you know, drug, drug dependence. I'm not talking about the armed robberies and all the other violent and brazen crimes that we're seeing in our community today. Talking about individuals that may need help, uh, and then they want help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, we, but you do acknowledge that there is a space within legal practice where policy decisions are being made, not necessarily in accordance with the prescriptions of the legislature. And that was basically over a rule, whereas a matter of trial practice for the last however many decades, you were getting one type of action that the courts have at this point stepped in and said was not the appropriate uh course of action to take.
Uh, well, in response, Senator, uh, I wasn't um privy to the decision of Raro, I, I didn't rule on that case. I am aware of the fallout from it. I understand it was a three-two dissent, a three-two split on the opinion. Um, and I understand whatever uh legal requirements that I am applying to follow, based on the law, is what I'm going to follow. Uh, whether I personally agree with it or not, is aside from the fact that I'm a judge, and I take an oath to execute the laws as they are written. Um, so I don't know, does that answer your question? Are, are you asking me what I can do within the realm of legislating, legislating from the bench? Um, I, I don't, I don't think I would call it that. I think I would try to uh make a decision based on the rules, uh, the laws and the tools that I have as a judge, uh, to, to come to some decision that balances the defendant's rights and public safety.
Fair enough. Uh, members, no other questions? Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this concludes today's proceeding. A reminder again that we've deferred decision-making on the committee's recommendations to this Wednesday, October nineteenth, at ten thirty AM here in room two-two-nine and via video conference. I'd like to thank those of you who attended this Judiciary Committee hearing uh here today via Zoom, uh, and the YouTube livestream, and all of you who attended in person as well. We are adjourned.